Let's take.
Commissioner Ballard.
Here.
Commissioner Cunningham.
Here.
Commissioner Elliott.
Here.
Commissioner Hillsinger.
Here.
Commissioner Lawler. Commissioner Lawler, can you hear us?
Let the record show that Commissioner Lawler is on the screen, but we cannot hear him.
Okay.
Commissioner Sneed.
Here.
And Commissioner Taylor.
Here.
All right, Chair Hillsinger, I've got the six present, um, you have a quorum.
Okay, let's go ahead and, uh, first item is, uh, meeting minutes from June thirteenth, need a, uh, motion to accept.
Like to make a motion to accept the match.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it. Uh, we have no committee reports. Uh, new business consideration petitions showing none. Old business ready for action, uh, first item letters for approval. PC eleven dash twenty-two fifty-seven fifty-seven South Lindbergh.
So this is fifty-seven fifty-seven South Lindbergh, a request for an amended C eight, one point six acres. Um, this is a simply your letter of request, um, consistent with your, uh, with your recent vote to send to the council.
Okay, uh, with that, we need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I got a motion.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it. And we'll go on to PC sixteen dash twenty-two Kimberley George.
Uh, good afternoon, commissioners, uh, before you is a letter of, uh, decision for PC sixteen dash twenty-two Kimberley George, which was a request for a conditional use permit in the R two for a zero point seven four acre tract located on the north side of Parker Road, approximately a hundred and fifty feet west of Bell Fountain Road. And this letter is consistent with, uh, your vote of approval on the, the staff report. I did want to clarify, uh, two things before a, a motion was made. Um, there was a discussion at the previous executive meeting, um, in regards to, to work that had been started or completed on the site. And I, after staff reviewed the public hearing and also, uh, receiving further communications from the petitioner, uh, it was clarified, uh, to us that work was performed prior to the occupation of the site as a home daycare, which is what it currently is operating as. Um, that work included plumbing, electrical, new flooring, uh, kitchen remodel and the installation of a, of an exterior camera and lighting. Um, there is additional wor- work required onsite per the State Department of Public Safety. Um, that would include installation of a fire pole station, smoke detectors, uh, exit signs and additional bathrooms. That work has not commenced yet. Um, it would not be able to until, uh, permits would not be able to be pulled for, for that work and uh, unless and until a conditional use permit was granted by the commission. Um, additionally, there was some discussion about, um, uh, uh, traffic safety or, or an increase in traffic around the site. The, uh, planning staff reached out to, uh, the police department. Um, and I, I apologize for the error on the, the screen there, should say since twenty sixteen. Um, but the police department responded to our request and, and provided, um, in this information that there was a hundred and fourteen vehicle crashes within the vicinity of the intersection of Parker Road and Bell Fountain Road. Um, none of those incidences resulted in fatalities and the, the vast, vast majority were, were, uh, minor in nature resulting in, in minimal property damage. Um, so at this time, I would ask for a motion of approval of the letter of decision.
With that, we need a motion of some kind. Anyone?
I'll make a motion for.
Do we have a second?
I'll second. Just go.
Discussion. Comments. Seeing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
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 Opposed, eyes have it. And, um, we have items not ready for action. We'll go to, uh, correspondence. First is PC thirty-six dash twenty-one.
So this is PC thirty-six twenty-one Moto Incorporated, which is a pending request for a change in zoning from M one F P M one and F P M three to M three and F P M three for a two point nine four acre tract of land located in the southeast quadrant of I two fifty-five and Coke Road. Um, and the action in front of you is, uh, to take a, to take an action on response to council order that was dated four twenty-six twenty-two, referring this petition back to the planning commission for further consideration. So, you know, the, the commission probably is, is well acquainted with the site at this point. It is located immediately adjacent to the JB Bridge. Um, and the pending request is to permit a convenience store with gas pumps and a, and a gap, excuse me, and a car wash. So just to give you a timeline again, March fourteenth, the planning commission voted to recommend approval of this request. And on my April eleventh, you forwarded your letter of recommendation to the council. On the twenty-sixth, the council ordered, um, the, the petition to be referred back to the commission for further consideration. And on May eighteenth, we received communication, um, which has been forwarded to you pertaining to, um, concerns of the council, um, pertaining to this petition. Um, and since May twenty-third, this has been, uh, held on your order of business. So for this evening, we have provided to you, um, two documents. Um, one response is, um, in response to the council order recommending, um, can, uh, reverting and re- and, and deciding to recommend denial. And the second response is reiterating your approval. And we will forward on to the council, uh, whichever document and revisions you'd like to that document to be made, if any revisions need to be made at this time.
Okay, Jacob, thank you. Um, with that, uh, what's your pleasure? Anyone?
Right?
Yes.
This is Keith, I'd like to, uh, recommend approval back to the council.
With our, you referring to our regular, uh,
Yes.
Original recommendation.
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second to that?
I second the motion.
We have a first and second, uh, comments and suggestions for any items that needed to be added to the response back to the council.
Yes, this is Bill. Sneed. Uh, I think we've, we've heard a lot of, uh, things from the commissioners, myself included. Um, when we approved it, the reasons why we thought it was, uh, the, the proper, uh, petition to, uh, to do something with that land. The letter of uh, approval that, um, Jacob put together, I appreciate, we appreciate that. But I don't think it really includes the number of items that I remember hearing from my, uh, my colleagues on the commission. And I think in, in our, our responsibility is to probably give, um, Jacob, uh, this list of items that we think should be included into the, the, uh, the response to, uh, that's needed. Um, that is, if the group is so inclined to, uh, go forward with an approval as, has been a motion made and seconded.
We, we have a motion, a first and a second to send it back with our original recommendations.
Right.
What would we like to add into the letter? Anyone?
Staff is perfect, we could easily go back and, and sort of by and large, just copy and paste your rationale, um, into your response from the analysis from your original letter of recommendation. Um, so we can definitely do that. And if there's anything in addition, we'd be, you know, whatever, uh, whatever you'd like to do, we'll do on your behalf.
Okay. Uh, yeah, because I, 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 I think the, the letter thus far, Jacob, just suggests that the commission wants to do something with the land, but I think I'll remember, uh, comments like, um, uh, it, it, it is, uh, serving the general public, not, uh, uh, it, it's, you have, um, and I don't know who made all these comments, but I, I think the commissioners can kind of write something down or call and, and provide that information. But it, it does serve, uh, the residents there. Uh, there's many people that go out that way to the highway as opposed to, uh, uh, Telegraph Road. And, uh, that's every morning and in, in the evening to get to those residences. There's people that get off there and get back on who work at the VA hospital. So I think those, those people would be served by this. Okay, and I, I don't intend to go over everything I remember, because my memory is not that good. Bill, that, that's as well as, as employees of the quarry, employees of the, the office down in the quarry, uh, the employees, the offices right off the river at the, at the docks there. Right. They, they do, you know, I don't think anybody knows this, but right now, I guess they have to get up and run all the way up to Telegraph where there, they would run there because they used to. Whole bunch of those employees used to eat right there at the Coke Hospital in the cafeteria years ago. Right. They really did. You've got all the, all the employees that work at the cemetery. That's right. As well as the hospital. And, and you know, the other thing that I, I remember hearing from a number of people is, um, uh, it, it, it's a, uh, it's an area that is desolate. Uh, activity there would even reduce crime. Um, and, and certainly, uh, there's, uh, uh, been, uh, complaints about derelicts, uh, living in, in the immediate area where this development is, uh, going to occur. There, there's a number of things that I remember hearing that I just think we need to mention those things as our rationale for approval.
So what I'm hearing is some of the analysis orig- from out of your original, um, letter of recommendation and ensuring that additional analysis includes or additional sort of rationale includes, it does serve the general public nearby residents as well as employees of the, of nearby institutions, including, but not limited to things like the VA Hospital, the Jefferson Barracks, um, National Cemetery, uh, and, and nearby quarry.
And also it would, uh, generate some revenue also, rather than just be taxes on property that's just sitting there idle.
And, and even the, uh, the, uh, Jacob, I, I believe, uh, the, uh, uh, Ophill study, uh, that area of study indicated that it should be developed, uh, and make use of that, uh, property. So, again, I think there's a number of things. I, I don't remember all that being in the, uh, uh, letter of approval. Uh, but hopefully it's there. If not, then I would call on my colleagues to, to let, um, the chairman, uh, know these things or, or Jacob, so we can help to get, uh, our rationale on paper. And we see the rationale before it goes to those guys?
Well, that was going to be my question is procedurally, how would you like to, how would you like to proceed? Because you can make a motion to approve reiterating your recommendation of approval. Um, and you can either direct staff to submit the documents based on the conversation today without seeing, or you can say, and we'd like to hold the, we'd like to hold on to it until we see, uh, that document. Um, and then you would see this again, um, and you would have the, you know, have a discussion at your sub- at your next meeting on July eleventh. But that's the, that's the decision of the commission to decide.
What's your pleasure?
I, I'm, I'll reverse my, uh, motion then, if that's what, Bill, you think we ought to do? Yeah, I, I think we ought to have it in writing that we've all seen before it goes anywhere, myself. Could, could I make, make this suggestion of as, as far as the exterior of the building? I know we have to have a, uh, architectural review, but just so Motomart would know that, uh, if, if, if they would throw out there that they would make this service station more architecturally friendly on all four sides. Sure. Uh, as a, of, you know, a helpful thing, because they're going to be putting in water and they're going to be putting in sewer and they still have a lot of property behind there that they own. So maybe down the rot line, somebody might want to put some offices back there to overlook the river. And I think. And, and if there's, uh, uh, that place looking nice from all four sides, including the, the car wash, uh, I wouldn't see why I wouldn't want to have an office right behind there that, that you see that all, you see that all over the place down in Chesterfield Bottoms where there's a, a film station, a car wash, and then there's an office building right behind it.
So if I may, your architectural review that you recommended approval of is architectural elevation shall be a standalone document that this commission re- reviews and approves. And in addition to that, the architectural elevations must show the color, style and materials to be used on the facades, the style of entrance monument style. Um, trash enclosure then shall also conform to the following requirements. Um, the architecture elevation shall show all the facades of all the structures and they shall be equally treated as approved on the architectural elevation. So when we say that and is that we mean that they, they need to treat all four sides equally and that you don't want to have a, a clear and obvious backside, um, necessarily, although in this case, they do have a, um, a drive-through window shown on what is sort of the side that's opposite or, or not visible to Coke Road.
Yeah, and Jacob, I know, we, we know what it is, we know what the building is. I mean, if you can just dress it up a little bit, because you can only put so many windows on a
Sure.
facility like this, but
Mm-hmm.
rather than just paint it white block on the back of the building.
Sure.
And, and Jacob, the other, the, the other thing that, uh, I think is, um, been, uh, called to everyone's attention is that apparently this is in some sort of a portion of the floodplain or something, that, am I remembering correctly?
So this site does have, um, does have floodplain on it at various points.
So, so if that's something that needs to be rectified, then I think our, our, um, uh, recommendation is, is that, uh, it has to be.
Yes, and your recommendation from, um, from April, um, you know, the, the conditions of development and, and your recommended conditions in the C eight.
That in there, yes.
It has, that, that would all be, you know, appropriately, um, per the county's ordinances.
Yeah, that's what I, okay, fine. Uh, Jacob and the commissioners, there's a service station right there at, uh, uh, Broadway and, uh, two seventy, right there in the floodplain.
Wow.
If you just, if you just moved the, and put, uh, a, a aquarium beside it, you have the identical situation, identical picture there. Going into Illinois, there's a service station on two seventy, right before you cross the bridge on the left side. In fact, there are two of them over there, one is directly in the floodplain. So what makes this one any different? I don't understand that.
Without, you know, where I'm, this is only a request as pertaining to the request in front of the commission, where the other ones developed prior.
Jacob, I believe this is because. But my point is, Jacob, it, it's no different, you know? And like these guys say, put it there, you know, why is such a big uproar? I don't understand it.
Again, I will put whatever into your document that you would like to put in there.
I think we need to reiterate the height of the sign too. That seemed to be a big issue about how high the sign was coming in from Illinois. And I've heard that from a dozen different sources.
Are those issues that, uh, should be in the conditions that?
These are all, what I, what I want to note is that these are all already in the conditions. So your res- what you're providing to the council is just a response to their order sending it back. So a lot of this already exists. And so that's kind of, you know, your, your response back to them isn't, you don't have to recreate the wheel, you've already got the basis here.
Okay. I'm good with that. Is everyone else good with that?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I, I think we just list the, the reasons why we think that it should be approved. Great. And, and some of these other things, if, if they're all in there, and I'm sure they are, uh, then we still have control over the heights of the sign and whether or not they have to do anything to, uh, alleviate that. But if you look at one of the letters that you had, had the, the, uh, the other letter, it mentions those things in there. So I'm not sure, uh, why it mentions it in tho- in that letter and not in the approval letter. Because they're used for, uh, it, it rationale for, uh, denying it. So we'll see the letter and then we're going to go ahead and, and try to prove that one, Bill, because like I said, the one up here sitting on, uh, two seventy before the Chain of Rocks Bridge, there are five hundred thousand dollar homes not a half a mile from that on the left, same side that that service station's on.
Okay, so recap what we're doing here is Jacob, you're going to bring the letter back to us?
Yes, absolutely.
We, do we need some kind of motion right now?
If the commission would like to simply hold, um, I think that that's perfectly appropriate and you can vote to send it on, on the eleventh.
Okay. Uh, let's do that then, can we get a motion to hold?
I'll move this for chairman.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. And then we'll go to the last correspondence, which is PC ten dash twenty-two Gregory and Lois Mann.
So back before you this afternoon is PC ten dash twenty-two Gregory and Lois Mann's, which was a request for a special business permit in the R five district for a point one eight acre tract of land located on the south side of Gravoy W- Road west of Vassal Drive. So purposes of review, this is located in South County along Gravoy Road. Um, it's essentially across the street from, uh, the Afton Plaza, um, shopping center. And the request is to permit, um, a insurance office in the look, in the, in the property. So as a, as a timeline, on April twenty-fifth, the planning commission voted to deny issuance of this special business permit to the, um, to the applicant. And on May ninth, you voted in favor, uh, to forward your letter of decision indicating, um, your rationale for the denial of the request. Subsequently, on June sixth, the petitioner filed within, um, the timeframe as, as permitted under the zoning ordinance, they did file an appeal with the county council. And once that appeal was filed with the county council, it was, uh, received and filed and referred back to the planning commission for, for further consideration. So that's what's in front of you, um, this evening is, is their, is their petition. So, um, as attached to your, in, in your packet, we have provided, uh, again, two documents. One, which is it reiterating your recommendation to deny the request for the special business permit as well as a second response, which is a reversal and approval of the request. But I want to go over a little bit about the petitioner's appeal, um, which was located in your packet. Um, they, because they lay out certain rationales as, that they would like the commission to consider, um, in, in the request and in their appeal. Um, one, they point to the staff's recommendation of approval, um, and the rationales inside. Uh, they brought up that they find that the traffic concerns as enumerated during, uh, public hearing by, uh, adjoining residences are unwarranted. That a, um, a, an insurance office of a very limited size and scope would in fact generate very little traffic. Um, and that concerns about, about it are, um, are not consistent with the reality of what the site would, would generate. Additionally, they note that the helm would remain, uh, residential in appearance. And additionally, it would remain residential, not only in appearance, it would remain residential in zoning and it would remain residential in building construction. So, uh, the special business permit does not, um, require or, or really permit, really permit them to redo the home with, with commercial construction style. Um, it is a special procedure intended to reuse, um, residential homes as small offices, things of that nature along, um, major arterial roads without, um, changing the underlying zoning or, um, creating, um, development issues for, um, nearby residents. Um, they note that the property has been vacant for an extended period of time and they assert that real estate values would not decline, although the department has no stance on real estate values as that is not a, a land use consideration that we take into, uh, into account when we do our, in our reviews. Um, and they did indicate and provide in their petition, um, for appeal, um, multiple letters of support from various individuals. Um, uh, the next door neighbor, um, and, and some other entities. So that is their appeal in a nutshell, which you have, uh, as part of your packet. And, uh, they are requesting, um, additional for you to reconsider. Procedurally, just so the commission knows what happens, no matter what you decide today. Um, this petition does get referred back to the council where it will be referred to, uh, the council's PIC, the Public Improvements Committee, um, for further review. Um, so that is procedurally what will happen, that this is not the end of the road for the petitioner. Um, but that is their, that is their appeal and they are requesting, um, for the commission to reconsider its decision.
Okay. With that, what's the, uh, pleasure of the commission?
This is, this is Sneed Al. I'll make a motion to, um, maintain approval or, or denial of it, of the petitioner. Um, I, I would do respect of, uh, their, uh, appeal. Uh, it's the petitioner's, uh, assessment of whether or not it will create traffic concerns or, or increased activity. Uh, I don't think anyone is, uh, concerned about changing the appearance of the structure. I think there's a lot of concern about making it look commercial with driveways and, and, and that type of thing. Um, so I, I would say that, uh, I'd make a motion for, uh, uh, to maintain the, uh, uh, denial of this petition.
Okay, do we have a second to that?
Second emotion.
Do we have a first and second discussion? All right, one thing, we talk about, uh, the concrete and all that. I didn't quite understand what the, I mean, I read the one letter from one of the residents about the amount of concrete in the driveway. But to me, if that was just a house there, they could go ahead and put a larger driveway in there anyway. So I don't think the concrete's a concern, like, it seems to me like the whole concern centers around traffic.
You are correct, uh, come, in the regards to e- even as a residential structure occupied by a, by a residential family, they do have the right to expand their driveway, um, irregardless of, of whether it was occupied by an insurance office.
Yeah, and, uh, the parking, if I remember correctly, they said there'd be parking for four or five vehicles?
Uh, I, there, we worked with them to reduce the, the scale and scope of it. Um, I think that they were providing, they were providing two in the garage, they were providing one adjacent to the garage and then they were doing, um, a small addition to the pad, um, a little bit in the lawn to, to accommodate all of their, um, to accommodate there on the site. Um, but they were keeping some of it, um, you know, inside the existing garage and, and on the existing, on the existing driveway. Um, you know, they indicated that as an insurance office, that in general, they probably wouldn't see very many customers, uh, in any given day. Um, and it was a pretty small number of parking stalls.
Oh, the, my last comment about the, uh, uh, information we were provided, uh, is that I read, I'm sure everyone did, every letter that was, uh, provided to us. And there was, I would say, a majority of the residents were, uh, not in favor of this petition. And while we don't always, uh, uh, consider that as a major factor, it's a major factor in the petitioner's reasoning that, that, uh, people support it. But there's, uh, an abundance of people that do not support that proposal if you read those letters.
I, I would agree too, but how much of it's just not in my backyard attitude? I mean, that, you know, that, that house fronts the road, it's not deeper into the subdivision. I don't know how it could have.
I don't know how it could affect the folks deeper into the subdivision. It's just like a pack mentality, once one complains, they all jump on board and start complaining.
Okay, anyone else, anything to add? Bill, are there any items that need to be added to the reply to the council, in your view?
Well, my, my view is that I think that the the petitioner's appeal has in their, their opinion whether or not this, this is, creates traffic concerns. The residents think it will, petitioner doesn't. The other thing is that people support this petition. And again, it says nothing about the people supporting denial, which is very evident in the correspondence that we were giving.
Okay, anyone else have anything to add?
I don't think I do.
Okay, seeing none, we have a motion to refer back to council, our original denial. With that, all those in favor?
I. Hi.
Opposed? Eyes have it. And that concludes correspondence, correspondence, any site plans?
There are no site plans this evening. And so before we conclude the meeting, I just want to bring for the good of the order, an information piece. So on this coming Wednesday, so in two days at seven PM, the city of Manchester has, has submitted to the St. Louis County Boundary Commission, a annexation proposal that would annex essentially a very large portion of unincorporated county between Manchester and Town and Country and DePere. So this would include a significant portion there along Manchester Road. In the general vicinity where the county commission has recently seen that Mason Lane laser meat petition was in this general vicinity, the K two M car vehicle sales and that Lincoln Car Dealership are all in this general vicinity there along Manchester Road. So I just wanted to bring it to commissioners' attention that that is going on, on Wednesday evening. So that will be happening in Manchester, at Manchester United Methodist Church. If you wanted to go and just watch the proceedings in person, or if you are interested and want to watch it from home, you can sign up at the Boundary Commission's website to get the Zoom link to watch the proceedings from home. But I did want to just bring that to the commission's attention this, this afternoon. And we, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
And the next meeting will be on July eleventh. We will have, it will be a, a public hearing and executive meeting. We do have three petitions up for that, up on that meeting for public hearing, including a, a large subdivision down in, and it's called Paradise Valley. It's where Serenity Hills, some of the commissioners may remember Serenity Hills. So that is coming back. And then we have two other smaller petitions, one of which is along Telegraph for a C two to C eight. And we have a third one, I, it's, it's a smaller one as well. And I do expect that at the July eleventh executive meeting, we will have a couple of big projects to discuss. Motomart, and excuse me, not Motomart, Lima, the, the Quick Trip at the corner of Butler Hill and Lima Ferry Road. I believe that we will have staff recommendations prepared in response to some of the issues and concerns that the petitioner brought up. It's taken a little while, we, we discussed this with the county councillor's office. We really wanted to make sure that we were addressing all of the legal concerns that the petitioner brought forward in their, in their letter. So we'll have a response to that in July. And our ladies in will also be at the executive meeting in July, in addition to some of the items that, from this evening, the, the Motomart that will be this evening, that will be for you all to, to consider again that night. Yeah, and that, and I think that'll, that about covers it, so.
Okay, all right, thank you. We need a motion to adjourn?
Jacob? Make a motion to adjourn, Steve Lawler.
I hear Mr. Sneed speaking.
Oh, Bill?
I, I just wanted to confirm the July eleventh meeting would start at six?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn, do we have a second?
I second it.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor?
I.
I oppose. Eyes have it and we'll see everyone on July eleventh, thank you.
Have a nice Fourth of July.
You too.
Thanks, everyone.